Recorded by members of the audience. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bylick?
I'm here.
Mrs. Brooks?
Here.
Dr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Grubb?
Present.
Mrs. McKessy?
She's on her way.
On her way, okay. Mr. Tate?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Thorwart?
Here.
Mr. Block?
I am here. Good evening, everybody. Superintendent's report, please, Dr. Frazier.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Block, and good evening, everyone. First and foremost, hope everyone had a fantastic spring break last week and an outstanding 70-degree day today. It's hard to believe, but one week from today, we will be into the fourth marking period, and the home stretch is very quickly upon us, is what that means. So, we hope that you're ready to join us in making it a great one. On a related note, on the agenda tonight, we do have the end of school year calendar for approval this evening, so we will be setting officially, knock on wood, the last day of school as well as our graduation date here this evening. Tonight is also a milestone evening for us as a school district. As we look ahead to the potential construction of a new middle school, as well as the renovated and expanded expansion of another middle school, that's really going to reshape the middle level of the Council Rock School District and ultimately take our middle school footprint from three schools to two schools. So, it's a very exciting time for us. Our bids, which you may have seen, did come in under budget, so we're very excited about that. So, you'll have a chance to hear more about that before the board takes action on that here this evening. And then, lastly, I do want to provide a quick update on our assistant superintendent search. We have posted for an assistant superintendent for teaching and learning. That posting deadline is tomorrow, and as of this moment, we have received 28 applications. So, we're very, very happy with that. It's a nice, deep candidate poll. We do hope to have a selection made and in place to begin with us on July 1st. I do want to remind everybody once again, especially given the budget deficit that we're facing for the 2016-17 school year, that we are not adding administrative headcount to the school district for 1617. Rather think of this as a reorganization. We have some other moves that are taking place, so that our administrative headcount will be remaining flat. But what this will allow us to do is center in on teaching and learning, so that we make sure that all roads do indeed lead to the classroom. So, again, we have 28 applications for that position. We're excited about it, and we still have tomorrow to go. So, with that, we have a great evening before us, and that ends my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Frazier. We'll move to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We would ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience or watching this broadcast live on CRTV when speaking. It is our goal to maintain a respectful environment, so that members of our community have an equal opportunity to address the board without interruption. While the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them in deliberating an issue, we may not respond to your comments or questions. Maureen Petrie?
Hi, everybody. I'm Maureen Petrie from Richborough, here to express my concern about moving forward with these building plans without having the redistricting and feeding plans set on paper first. As I mentioned last time I was up here, I'm very concerned about the loss of the Richborough Middle School. It's going to result in a loss of one-third of our kids' sports teams, band, orchestra, acting, and leadership opportunities. We all know that change is inevitable, and I know you know this, but since it was mentioned more than once at the last meeting, kids are resilient, and it's great to have friends at different schools in the district. But it's better to have friends in the same school to eat lunch with, to get homework from, and to have as lab partners. That statement leads me to my next concern. Our current fifth graders, who will be going into eighth grade when Richborough Middle School closes, will be most impacted by this redistricting. They'll be in two different middle schools. This class needs to be kept together in their feeding pattern, and we need to plan for this class to be taken care of. On a positive note, a friend whose child recently went through a school change told me that he and his wife chose to speak positively of the change that was occurring, even though they weren't happy about it. His child's transition was smooth, and he's having a good experience. I know whatever happens, we all need to remember to be positive. And in closing, just a note, please remember to include the achieved population in the redistricting, building, reassessment plans. I don't think that that was talked about in the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Gamble?
Hi, I'm Tina Gamble. I'm also from Richborough. I'm also falling off of Maureen Petrie's comments. I have a child who is currently in Richborough Middle School and absolutely loves the school. I know it is inevitable that the school will be closing. I also have a child who is in fifth grade, who is going to be directly impacted by the transition between seventh and eighth grade. It's going, as Maureen said, it's two different middle schools. My request would be to have this grade be grandfathered in. That way, these children can all stay together within North Hampton Township, where they meet all their friends, where they have all their friends through sports activities, instead of having part of the students go over to Newtown and then over to North, just to keep these children together and have them grandfathered in. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Is there any further public comment? Not tonight?
Not yet.
Okay. With that, then, we'll move straight to our first item for board approval. Ms. Brooks, please.
I move to approve the last day of the 2015-16 school year and the class of 2016 graduation dates as Friday, June 10th, 2016.
Second. Mr. Bylick got that one. Buzzers. Any questions for the administration?
There was some discussion about start times, chatter about, you want to just real quick enlighten?
I will, yes. We are taking a look on that Friday, the last day of school. With this calendar, we used one snow day this year, so this places our last day of school and thus graduation on a Friday for the first time in years and years here for the Council Rock School District. So, what we are looking to do is to move up the graduation start times at each of our high schools. So, right now, those would be set for four o'clock traditionally and then 6:30. We were looking to squeeze those start times together anyway, even without it happening on Friday this year. But now, what we're going to be looking at in terms of start times will be a three o'clock start time at North High School and a five o'clock start time at South High School. So, we do have a fairly considerable Jewish population within our community. We want to be respectful of that community. It's also just a Friday, start of a weekend. And so, for all of those above reasons, we want to allow for, to just, again, to be respectful of that and allow for everybody to get in before sundown and get their weekend started on a really high, happy note with tassels turned the right way.
I just want to add, for people who may not have experienced a graduation in general, on average, those ceremonies are about one hour.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. Dr. Foster, could I please ask you to read number two?
I move to authorize the expenditures of the Middlebux Institute of Technology General Program for the period July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017, as set forth in the submitted budget proposal as contained in the attachment to this agenda.
Second.
Dr. Foster or Mr. Reinhardt, do you have any commentary to provide here?
Not unless there's questions. We've talked about it a couple of times before.
Okay. Can we address what Council Rock's portion of this budget is?
We sure can.
That would just be useful to know, and also to note how it has changed from previous years.
Okay. Our portion of the increase went from $1,143,303, and it has increased by $62,443, or 5.46 percent. In addition to that, there's been an adjustment made for increased students from what the budget was in 2015 to 16, to what the actual students came in at. Because of that, our share of the total expenses of the, operating expenses of the Vo-Tec went from the budgeted amount of 16.556 percent to 17.46 percent. This adjustment equates to $253,000 of additional amounts, because we're paying off a previous year adjustment. In the future, what I will do is make sure I get this information before our financial statements are closed in the year this adjustment is for, and I will make sure that is posted to that year's financials as opposed to this adjustment coming forward to affect our budget. This, the first year it's been so big of an adjustment.
You covered the ground. I just, it's a great report, thank you. Any other questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. Mrs. Thomas, could you please read number three?
I move to approve the Council Rock Choir Parents Association donation request for the purchase of a new Yamaha Klavino with Dolly and a new Yamaha TF5 mixing console, as well as a variety of wireless microphones and system upgrades. Total approximate value of the donation is $16,000, subject to audit.
Second.
That's a fantastic donation.
Sure is, and certainly like to thank the Choir Parents Association for bringing that to us here this evening. Much appreciated.
Any questions or comments? Hearing no objections, I'd ask the secretary to record the vote. It is passing with unanimous consent. Moving along to number four, Mr. Grubb, please.
That's fine. Does anybody have any issue with taking all of these items together?
That was my plan.
I'm just asking before we start that way.
And I apologize.
Yeah. So, we begin. I move to award the bid for the Newtown Middle School Project General Construction to Penn Builders Incorporated at a total cost not to exceed $33,259,800, including alternates numbers, alternate numbers two, three, seven, eight, 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 nine, 10, 11, 12, and 14. Contingent upon all Plan Con approvals, approval of bonds, insurance, and subject to audit. I continue by moving to award the bid for the new Newtown Middle School Project Mechanical Construction to Borough Developers Incorporated, doing business as Borough Construction, at a total cost not to exceed $4,000, $4,866,000, including alternate numbers four B and seven, contingent upon all Plan Con approvals, approval of bonds, and insurance, and subject to audit. I continue to move to award the bid for the new Newtown Middle School Project Electrical Construction to Brendan Stanton Incorporated, doing business as BSI Electrical Contractors, at a total cost not to exceed $5,571,000, including alternate numbers six, seven, and 13. Contingent upon all Plan Con approvals, approval of bonds, and insurance, subject to audit. Further, I move to award the bid for the new Newtown Middle School Project Plumbing Construction to Apex Plumbing and Heating Incorporated at a total cost not to exceed $2,382,000, including alternate number seven, contingent upon all Plan Con approvals, approval of bonds and insurance, and subject to audit. Lastly, I move to award the bid for the new Newtown Middle School Project Environmental Abatement to Plymouth Environmental Company Incorporated at a total cost not to exceed $219,450, contingent upon all Plan Con approvals, approval of bonds and insurance, and subject to audit.
We have a second. You want to repeat any of it? Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
I know we had a long meeting last night with lots of information. Could you give us just a little bit of context here, please?
Sure. If I could, I'm going to do it for both projects.
That'd be great.
Because they're both very similar, both very successful in the award, in the bidding process. So, both projects are about $2.5 million below the total project budget that was prepared for these projects. So, combined, we're $5 million below budget. Also, in addition, we have about $4 million in construction contingencies combined for those two projects. So, we're in extremely good shape financially with these projects. That includes select alternates that are value-added for the project as well, sustainable finishes. Each of those projects would be, are proposed to be the seven teams that we've talked about in the past. It includes those four additional classrooms that were mentioned. Both lead gold buildings, including the $2 million ACE grant that we're still on track for. And the buildings will be used as a teaching tool as a part of that gold certification. Really, great success. I think that's a high-level overview. We had, as you said, you know, a large, a long discussion last night. I do want to quickly introduce David Schrader from Schrader Group Architecture, Robin Breslin from Breslin Riddard Fodaro Architects, Harif Azil from Dewey Engineering, Warren Garricki from Dewey Engineering, and thank the three principals for being here, Tim Ketti, Tim Long, and Rich Hollahan, representing the middle schools tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Are there any questions for the administration or comments?
I think there's, bear with me one, there was just one comment, which, there was a notation at the end of the motion, which was not part of the motion, but probably bears speaking to, which was the total project cost, which was that the total construction cost described in the motion above is $46,298,250. That's not part of the motion, because it's covered by the individual motions. But total project for the new Newtown Middle School, as described in the motions above, was $46,298,250. Sorry.
Not to exceed.
No, it's not not to exceed. That, that is the summation of the total above. That is not part of the motion. The motion contained the individuals. So, it's not a not to exceed. That's the total of the budgets above.
Doug, can you just, just give an overview of what the timing would be? Like, just what the timeline?
Sure.
What the implication of this vote is?
Yes. Upon approval this evening, we need to execute the contracts and agreements with the townships by the 20th of April. That gets the contractors officially on board. A notice to proceed for 20 April. We will then begin to process a large amount of paperwork with the contractors, submittals, schedules, all the types of things we need, schedule of values. The actual mobilization will take place sometime in April or May, and you'll see site activity in June, for sure. At Holland, we have some preliminary work happening a little sooner, but basically both starting around the same time. By 2000, the summer of 2018, both projects will be completed, so that in August of 18, students arriving at both of those buildings will be going to brand-new completed schools. At Newtown Middle School, from 18 to 19, we will be demolishing the existing school and completing the remaining athletic field that goes in its place. So, that is basically final completion of Newtown Middle School is then the summer of 19 with that demolition piece.
So, for anyone that might be driving around the area this summer, they will begin to see activity?
Absolutely.
Doug, you want to touch on the Holland renovation real quick to just, while you're going, and then we're on topic, because that will look a little bit different?
Yeah, sure. Well, you know, right now, if you've never visited Holland Middle School, I would challenge you to find the entrance to Holland Middle School when you do arrive for the first time. One of the challenges for the architect and the charge was to create a new sense of entry for that project, as well as addressing all of the programmatic challenges that the building has, the pizza pie-shaped rooms, the open pod, the old open pod concept. So, essentially, that building will be gutted pieces at a time. So, we will carefully work through phases of the project, staging it, moving kids to safe areas beyond secure partitions, while the contractors renovate the building in sections above and below one another at a time. And then, the students will move into those new sections, and will move and take over the space they just vacated as we go. So, the building is about 140,000 roughly square feet. There's a new addition as well of about 45,000 square feet that's being added to it. That includes an auditorium, that includes band choral music rooms, it includes an auxiliary gym, renovated locker areas, and a new entrance administrative area, secure entry, all of the things that, the good things you need in the middle school. And the nice thing is, you know, because you weren't involved, if you're watching this likely, is we had collaborative meetings with both sets of architectural teams every two weeks, so that there was parity between these two schools. So, although one's new and one's existing when they're finished, there's going to be a lot of similarities between the two facilities when completed. So, you know, kudos, a lot of credit to the design team for working so close together through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other questions or comments? Dr. Foster?
So, the Newtown Middle School had formerly been a high school, and its life as a building for the district was about 60 years. And so, this new Newtown Middle, is there any sense of whether that's about the life that we're thinking about, the 60 years? I would say, you know, it's 40, 50 years. Right. You know, similar before, you know, again. If it were similar, it's like around 2076 we're talking about. And I know Mr. Grubb comes from a very long-lived family. He may still be around, but it may be the case that some of us aren't. But it just, it's, it's really humbling to think about all the work that's gone on in the project and what a lasting contribution this building will make to the community when you think on the span of five decades or six decades. It's, it's pretty cool, especially if it's needed, which, which I think it is.
Dr. Thorwart?
Real quick, Doug, I mean, I know parents who've never seen this. This is not the first time you've staged through a building when you renovated it.
No.
We know how to do this, and I, you have a detailed plan.
Sure.
Middle schools are a little more extensive, Holland, but I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Yeah.
You've done this before.
Let me, absolutely. Let me say, and I won't get into great detail, because it would take a long time to go through the amount of phasing, you know, scenarios and the sequencing that we planned. And there's five to eight phasing drawings alone, just for the Holland Middle School, that shows the contractors exactly what piece of the project they own, the milestone dates they need to meet, and, you know, they cannot move into another piece until that piece is done, the type of partitions that need to go up, the way we safely move kids around the construction and make sure that there's always a safe side of all of these construction partitions. We had similar projects at Churchville, at Holland, at Goodno. Dewey Engineering has extensive experience in managing phased projects. And we will also be out in front of parents at Holland Middle School and Newtown Middle School prior to construction, preferably, to have a question-answer evening. So, we'll present the project, we'll explain the phasing in greater detail, and we'll answer any questions that parents may have relative to concerns for their children.
And I just want to be clear, the Richborough parents will be invited?
Absolutely.
I knew you meant that.
I'm sorry.
I just, I want to make sure that.
No intention of omitting them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, that's, it's, we, it's the Richborough-Holland team, for sure.
To build on what Doug said, we've done this, fortunately, multiple times in elementary schools. And what has been important, and I'll contribute, attribute part of it as well to Dewey in their supervisory role, as well as Doug, the people working on the project, particularly the management team and the people overseeing the trades, they have a full and comprehensive understanding of what they're doing in terms of that they're working at school. And we've seen cooperation about things. We've seen things where timetables were adjusted, because things were noisy, and wonderful cooperation from the trades and from our vendors to adjust things that might otherwise be a cost. And they've, they've taken some of those on themselves to adjust it, so that the time, we have had, we've had testing that comes up in the middle of a, of a construction project that had to shift because of a snowstorm, and the trades adjusted their time, and they've got great cooperation. And I really, I contribute, I attribute a large part of that to the construction supervision coming from Dewey and Doug and your team as well.
Mr. Bylick, comment?
Yeah. I'll be voting no on both of these motions. For reasons I've talked about before, I think that it's premature to commit the funds to build these buildings, rehab these buildings, without knowing where the kids are coming from and where they're going to sit. But, that said, I was thoroughly impressed last night with the presentation that we had and the work that Mr. Taylor and the team had put together. I felt as though it was very clear, very well-presented. I encourage everyone who's, who's affected by this, which is really everybody, because even if your kids aren't going to go to those schools, you're paying for them, to log onto YouTube and take a look and watch that presentation. I think that these are going to be high-quality buildings. I think the design is very good, and it's obvious that there's been a keen eye to managing expenses, and I appreciate that, Doug. I had a question last night about bond financing, and I did ask Mr. Reinhardt about it today, because we are coming in under the $110 million mark that we had. And Bob can step in and clear it up, but it seems to be that we did a majority of the borrowing on one or two issues already, and then the rest of them are going to be bank-qualified bonds as we move forward in $10 million increments, so we can cut those back if we need to. Did I characterize that?
That's correct.
Okay. Just one other comment. Ms. Brooks started the conversation last night when we were talking about design, and Denise said, "Did you ask any of the kids?" And I thought about that and spoke about it a little bit last night, but a couple of things. The real end-users of these schools are the kids. I appreciate the input from the principals and the teachers involved, and I think that's very, very important. But we have a great opportunity here to learn from the kids in the schools, and especially, we have ninth graders who sit here occasionally and report to us about programs and what's going on in the school. And I'm willing to bet these folks would love to have an opportunity to have some input into these projects. And we're here to teach kids, right? So, we're doing two projects, big projects for hundreds of millions of dollars. And as I wrote in an email to Dr. Frazier and Mr. Block and a few others today, what an excellent opportunity to give our MBIT students, any other students who might want to be involved with supervision, and so we're not infringing on what the team needs to do, but to be able to sit in a job interview at some future date and say, "As a matter of fact, I helped give guidance and learned a lot from working on a $100 million project at my, at my school district, and here's how I learned, and here's how I helped." So, I hope that we, being a school district and teaching these kids, I hope we find some way to safely and adequately engage in that process.
Thank you, Mr. Bylick. Any other questions or comments?
We should note that the presentation that was given last night is also on the front page of the website, as well as the facilities section of the website. So, if anybody wants to look at that in more detail, it's, it's a very detailed presentation.
Dr. Thorwart, real quick, and I'll second a little bit of what Mr. Bylick said. I had two head-concerns about building schools without knowing what we're going to do, and we had some public comment about that. I did get, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, what I feel is a very firm commitment that we're going to get that done in time for these schools to open. I would have loved to have it done ahead of time, but my comfort level went up two weeks ago with just the fact that this board committed to finishing that part. Yeah, I'd love to have it done beforehand, too, but in light of, in light of the commitment I got, I'm a lot more comfortable than I was.
And as to one of the comments that was made tonight, maybe we would consider, before we even do that, thinking about what the current fifth grade is going to do. It's one class, it's one grade level, and there may be some anxiety that we could make some, just a commitment to that grade level that wouldn't be long-term and have a big financial impact, that I know when we opened other schools where people were being moved around, it was a long time ago, I grant you, but, but it did happen. The anxiety, and I don't mean any disrespect, but I'm speaking about myself, my own experience, was worse than the actual movement. So, the two, the year and a half where you didn't know what was happening was much worse than once, once you kind of knew what was going on. So, maybe there's some options that could be looked at for that class and alleviate some of that anxiety, since it's one class.
Ms. Brooks?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to that, because one of the things that makes me also comfortable about everything, about this, what you said before about what happened two weeks ago, because the priority of balancing the high schools is very high for me. But I want to take it a step back, because we have also previously committed to... But I want to take it a step back because we have also previously committed to not splitting schools, okay? And so, in essence, what we're talking about when we talk about this small portion of this fifth grade where there could be secondary redistricting, in essence, is we didn't grandfather them, we were splitting them. And so, we have to have some special consideration of these small things. What we're talking about grandfathering, it's really a very, very small number, but to get to the point further, if we didn't do that, we would be in conflict with something that we had previously said, that we did not want to split kids in a school. So I understand that we still have to run it all out and see how it looks, but for me, that is of the highest priority to at least begin at a point where we are honoring that and not splitting schools.
Mr. Gray?
To the point about including children, the work that we're approving tonight is largely the operational structure of the school and the way things move and exist, so it's a little late on that. On the other hand, much as when we built South, we included children and students who would go there in the selection, creation of the school colors, the name of the roadway, the designation of the mascot for the school and those things. But I'll go you one better, which is it's not only ownership, each year, if you don't count the kids who went to Richborough Middle School because they didn't go to one of these two schools, we have 1,800 kids every year who graduate who've attended either Holland or Newtown. So, those kids would have had experience going through the school and be a resource and I'm glad to have many people participate in terms of input, but those will tell us, you know, their view is a little different because they've seen school beyond that and they get a little bit of perspective on it. You know, I would tell you that if you entered, if you spoke to a sixth grader about to go in, their biggest concern often is the combination lock, you know, and how to do the combination lock. So that would be tempered by someone who was in ninth or 10th grade. So, you know, I don't disagree and I think and I know actually that, you know, Dr. Foster is working with his team to develop a plan about, you know, we talk about, Dr. Frazier, Foster sits next to him. His family doesn't live as long as Holland apparently, and I just lose my eye on it. Dr. Frazier's working with his team to, you know, to, when you create a school and you start a school, there's something called commissioning. You actually commission the facilities and you commission this. And I know he's looking forward to how to do that and how to do that appropriately, and so I think that's really where it falls in. And there's still color choices and that's one thing that is part of it. Some of the design issues in these schools are not items that I like or agree to. You know, I'll still agree with the program to go forward. There are certain design elements in Holland when we come to it, the steps, the learning steps, I think that they're just, I don't like them. I don't think they're inclusive for children with disabilities, but I think that's a minor point in a rather large school.
Thank you, Mr. Grubas Thomas.
I'm sorry, I, so I wanted to be clear on the fifth grade. I don't think we need to require grandfathering. I just want to throw the idea out there. There might be some kids who don't, who once we draw the lines want to go where the lines are drawn. I think it would be an optional thing because we don't have to require everybody to go. So, if there's kids who are fine to move and want to move based on wherever the lines get drawn, that's how I'd like to see it done. It would be something that was optional for people, because that'll help balance out even that class if some people choose, you know, so.
Any final comments or questions?
Just one, I'm going to trust the administration on how you're going to pull this off and give you a chance to put something in front of it. I don't want to, I don't even want to give you a preconceived idea. You know what you're doing for this and I really, for the public, trust the administration to come up with a good reasonable plan. I think we'll be okay with that.
All right, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Beilich?
No.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one, congratulations. Mr. Tate, you read number five, please.
Let's see, is five a long one? No, very simple. Number five, I move to approve Plan Con Part F, Attachment C, Part G, and Part H for the new Newtown Middle School project.
Thank you, Dr. Foster, with a second. Any questions?
When will we get the money?
Questions that there could be an answer to.
Like we never.
I just have to clarify again, so this is, submit documents to the state to supposedly get some sort of money sometime in the future as a return, a return back for the money that we've just agreed to spend, is that right?
Right after they do a budget.
I understand.
Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Beilich?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. Number six, Ms. McKessy, please.
I move to award the professional services agreement for construction testing to David Blackmore and Associates Incorporated at a total cost not to exceed $100,000 for the new Newtown Middle School project, subject to audit. I move to award the professional services agreement for construction waste management to Revolution Recovery LLC at a total cost not to exceed $150,000 for the new Newtown Middle School project, subject to audit.
Need a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. And this is a cleanup. Mr. Taylor?
Just basically, the construction testing is for the independent testing that the agency works directly for the district and observes the construction activities, works in close coordination with our construction manager with us, and performs testing on many of the activities that the contractors are performing, looking after our best interest, and will work closely with the township and hopefully minimize some of the testing that they would have performed and charged us for by working together with them as well.
And can you just confirm, these are all, this was all included in the total costs that we were presenting yesterday? These are not additional?
These are not, these are all, these are part of the soft cost, the fees that we talked about. All of the approvals tonight are within that overall umbrella of cost, yes.
But that's in addition to the $46,298,250?
It's in addition to the construction cost, but it's in the soft cost, which equals the project cost.
So do we have a total on this agenda here, what the total cost is somewhere?
It would imagine the number you showed us last night, right?
Yes, and it's actually on item four, there's a cover memo and there's also a total project budget included with the cover memo.
Okay, does the public have that memo? Or is that just something we have?
No.
No, but we made that public last, on the documents from last night.
Yeah, these actually, actually-
Can we just say what it is, so since everyone's voting on, just to give a total of what the cost is, do you mind?
I'm sorry, what, the total construction cost for Newtown was the $46,298,250.
Total project cost?
Total project cost.
Total project cost with the ACE grant is $52,902,552.
Is that inclusive of contingency?
Yes, that's inclusive of everything that we're discussing.
Of contingency which may or may not be spent.
And there's a, in that number, yes, Jerry, it's a good point, there is a, we're carrying almost $2.2 million of contingency.
Dr. Foster, any question or comment?
Yeah, I wasn't clear on the second item. Does that have anything to do with the demolition of Newtown Middle? Or is that's not what that is?
Yeah, yeah, the construction waste is part of the, also, it's a part of the lead process. It helps us with the recycling, responsible recycling of the select materials. So yes, all of the construction waste will be managed, manifests will be provided, and Dewey will be managing that with the contractors on-site, separate dumpsters for different materials and such.
But that is, that includes the cost of demolition?
Oh, yes, yes. The cost of demolition is included in the $46 million, yes.
Okay, but not this $150,000?
$150,000 is in the soft cost.
Okay.
But part of the overall, 50, 52, whatever I said that number was, 52,9.
Thanks.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Beilich?
No.
Motion passes eight one. Mr. Beilich, could you please read number seven?
Is that punishment? Can I refuse to read a motion?
You may not. Otherwise, you can sign all these papers.
I move to award the bid for Holland Middle School additions and renovations project, general construction to Lowbar Incorporated at a total cost not to exceed $27,876,200, including alternate numbers 2, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 11A, and 12, contingent upon all Plan Con approvals, approval of bonds and insurance, and subject to audit. I further move to award the bid for the Holland Middle School additions and renovations project, mechanical construction to MBR Construction Services Incorporated at a total cost not to exceed $4,808,000, including alternate number 3B, contingent upon all Plan Con approvals, approval of bonds and insurance, and subject to audit. I move to award the bid for the Holland Middle School additions and renovations project, electrical construction to Brendan Stanton Incorporated, doing business as BSI Electrical Contractors, at a total cost not to exceed $5,499,800, including alternate numbers 5B and 14, contingent upon all Plan Con approvals, approval of bonds and insurance, and subject to audit. I move to award the bid for Holland Middle School additions and renovations project, plumbing construction to J.R. Reynolds Incorporated at a total cost not to exceed $2,464,400, contingent upon all Plan Con approvals, approval of bonds and insurance, and subject to audit. Lastly, I move to award the bid for the Holland Middle School additions and renovations project, environmental abatement to Sergeant Enterprises Incorporated at a total cost not to exceed $179,000, contingent upon all Plan Con approvals, approval of bonds and insurance, and subject to audit.
Second. Mr. Grubb?
I'll add, if I can, the total cost, construction, total construction cost not to exceed $40,827,400. Can we also state what the actual cost is? And I think-
Yes.
If everything that was $47,915,508, am I reading that right?
Yes, you are.
Any questions, further questions or comments?
Doug, feeling, I just, I think I note that there is only one vendor who is common to both projects.
That's correct.
Electrical vendor. All the other vendors are individual to each project.
Yes.
I point that out because this is an element of distributing risk as well as allowing us to ensure that project, the personnel aren't backed up one project against the other. It's the independence of the two projects. Not only do they have different architects, they have largely, with the exception of electrical contractor, different construction crews. So it should prepare us to move forward and make a quick and hopefully expeditions play.
We've had good experience with this electrical contractor in the past and have reached out to them prior to this recommendation to verify their capacity in terms of bonding and projects they take on each year.
I also want to point out that, you know, historically, we've done projects all over the board and what's going on here in terms of the number of primes really reflects learnings over the time. I think when we did South, we had 19 separate primes. It became an administrative, kind of administrative burden to try and coordinate that many. We've done them with fewer, but I think, you know, this gives enough latitude and enough, and limits the span of control of any one prime to allow Dewey to really do the job they've done so well with the time for it.
Other comments?
Real quickly, Mr. Taylor, last night you said that this district has had experience with many of these contractors, or is it most of the contractors?
If I have not had experience with them, Dewey Engineering has, so between Dewey and myself, we have experience, I believe, with every one of these contractors.
Good, good. And Dr. Foster today shared with us some interesting data that showed, last night you showed us some cost per square foot data.
Yes.
And today, Dr. Foster shared with us some national and regional figures for cost per square foot, broken down even at the middle school level, and these projects look pretty good in comparison.
Yeah, 30 to, right, 30 to $45, it was 15 to $30 less per square foot, it was significant.
That's right.
Well done, gentlemen. Now you don't have to do the homework we asked for.
Yeah, if anybody wants to see those figures, they can ask any of us because we all have it, but those figures are very reassuring that we got some very good bids. I think it makes sense as well. We put out a great quantity of bids tonight, and there's an element here which I think bears some brief oversight, which is, as a school district, our bidding process is governed by state law. Among the qualifications of state law talks about something called prevailing wage, which says that projects over, I think it's $25,000, have to be bid at a rate that's established by LNI so that someone can't come in and bid to have workers on-site for $12 an hour if that's not the prevailing wage, it's established by LNI. Lastly, in that same realm, when we talk about bidding, we are required to award bids to the least-priced, least-cost qualified bidder. So, you know, people sometimes, sometime, and I don't say this because of any known issue with any of these bidders, but sometimes someone will say, "Oh, that guy, he's no good," or "That company doesn't do good." You know what? They're qualified. Doug, Dewey, and the architects have examined them, looked at references, and we are obeying and complying with the law that says it's least-cost qualified bidder. So, our hands are tied for that. It also has, bears mentioning at this point that that bidding process, as a blinded bidding process, is what amounts to saving, what, $4 million over the two projects? How much was the saving?
Five million.
About $5 million over the two projects. But I want to be really clear, because occasionally I'll have a trade, someone in trades come to us and say, "Well, some vendor you're using doesn't have a great reputation." And the answer is, they bid the number, they were qualified by our experts in the field, and we're bound by state law. So, I always concern Rob when I go on these diatribes, on these monologues, but I think it bears saying it here, just because that's the way the world we live in works. Thanks.
Any last questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Beilich?
Can I just ask a question? Are we still on the motion I just read?
Yes.
Is that what we're voting? No.
Do you pause?
No, I just-
Say yes, figure it out later.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Motion passes eight one, congratulations. Ms. Thomas, you read number eight, please?
I move to approve Plan Con Part F, Attachment C, Part G, and Part H for the Holland Middle School additions and renovations project.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Beilich. Any questions? Roll call vote, please?
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Beilich?
Yes, but I'll ask you to record my condition from the last time.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. We'll move to number nine. Dr. Thorwart, please.
I move to award the professional service agreement for construction testing to David Blackmore and Associates Incorporated at a total cost not to exceed $100,000 for the Holland Middle School additions and renovations project, subject to audit.
Second.
Any questions?
This is the same-
Yes.
As we did for Newtown.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Beilich?
No.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grubb?
Yep.[1798.33]
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes. Motion passes eight-one. Mrs. McKessy, please read number ten.
I move to award the technology education supply bid, number sixteen dash zero-one, to the thirteen vendors as listed on the total low acceptable bid column at a total cost not to exceed twenty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars, fifty-seven cents, subject to audit. I move to award science supply bid, number sixteen dash zero-two, to the twelve vendors listed on the total low acceptable bid column at a total cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars, sixty cents, subject to audit.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Byler.
I'm going to be voting no on the technology education supply bid, and it, it just comes down to a funny problem for me, which is, I, I don't think that we would be teaching about buggy whips, and I'm not sure what our stance is here on teaching about standard film photography at this point in, in our career. I, I don't necessarily agree when we moved or spent money to move the darkroom for use in chemical photography. I, I don't know that I agree with the expenditure of five hundred dollars apiece for four Nikon FM-10 film cameras. So it's just a little thing I have, so I'm sure it will pass, but I'll be voting no on these items.
Other questions or comments?
I, I was going to ask, I mean, Jerry's kind of said it, but we, we are still teaching film classes at the high school. Digital, uh, 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 chemical photography, film, as compared to film, right?
Yes. Yes, they, the, the, through the technology education department, they do a combination of digital and traditional film photography. They believe that the, the best understanding for students before moving into a digital environment is to do the traditional photography, which is what Mr. Grub was speaking to about why we continued with the development lab when we moved at, at Council Rock North, when we moved to Knox.
And Mike, I'll just say, we had a presentation by some of the media, and I, at the base level, who I'm not a photographer, admittedly, would have agreed with Mr. Grub. In this day and age, everybody takes selfies, and, and they spoke incredibly passionately about the need to learn traditional photography. And so I ended up believing the professionals. I mean, I'm not trying to sway your decision, but I'm just saying, on the outset, to me, I would completely agree. I was swayed by that presentation when we did the darkroom, and I'm, again, not, I don't have a lot of personal knowledge about this kind of thing, but the, the media part of our district has been very strong, and, and, and that's why I will vote for this, just for information.
I wrestle with, I mean, there, there's a lot in this bid that I can completely agree with, but there are pieces of...
Hang on, Dr. Foster, please. Sorry, Jerry.
Yeah, and I can't reproduce it, but I, I was, had great concerns about the darkroom when we were going to do it, and right on this street, we have two award-winning photographers that are nationally recognized, and I had the great pleasure of going to each of their houses and asking them, what would you do? And they, like typical artists, they, they thought about it. They really sincerely reflected and said, but at the end of the day, as they reflected, they, they thought, you know, there's so much that you get out of, of that darkroom process that they're still favoring, happy, and, and, and I'm sorry, I can't reproduce their thoughts, and, and it was like an hour-long conversation. But it, but it was, it was an honor to talk to them, and so really, for me, the darkroom and these cameras just provided an immense, amazing opportunity to talk to some talented artists that we have right here on the street, and I, I, if I could follow up what they said, maybe I could convince you, but I can't.
For me, Wendy, I hear what you say. I had a darkroom growing up. I had both a black and white and a colored darkroom, and I had it because it was, I, I initiated it myself. I was interested in myself, and, and I learned that way, and I saved the money. I took jobs to earn it. So I, I hear what you say, and I understand what you say, Bill, and I would, I would venture to guess that the professionals you spoke to, you know, it, it's, it's a great idea, but there are certain things that you want people to be self-motivated around to. So for me, that's, I, you know, the, the majority, believe me, selfies and photography are really either end of a spectrum. I don't believe that selfies and, and photography really belong in the same breath, but I, so this is my problem with it. It's not a major to-do, but I think it's something that we need to look at as we go forward and, and understand, are the things we're teaching our children? Because, you know what, as, and Bill, you referred to my father, thank you for referencing that. My father's ninety-four years old, and it amazes me, there is seventy-two more years of history that occurred since he graduated from college. There's a lot more to learn now, and I want to make sure we're teaching children the things they need to know, not the things they should have known. That's all.
You had a darkroom in your house?
Under the stairs of my parents' home, I built a darkroom. This, this was how people who were interested in things did it.
I have a darkroom in my house right now.
Well, yes, we have that.
Okay. May I have any more comments?
Lots of personal information, Stacey.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Glad to share.
Mr. Grub?
Uh, no, as I said before.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
No.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to two. Uh, Mr. Tate, if you could please take the next two together.
Right. I wanted to make some comments before or after the motion.
Why don't you go ahead and make the motion? We'll get a second in, and then if you could give us a second.
Could I ask you not to include eight oh two in your motion at this point than to make this a separate motion?
Actually, if you want to, why don't you take them together and if it fails, we can pull it out.
Actually, can I just ask a question? Because I, I apologize for not paying attention to this more carefully before, but don't we usually have a first read before we go to an approval on policy?
Typically, that's been the district's practice, and it's in policy, I think, zero, zero, three. So traditionally, the district has had two reads.
These four policies, as, as we discussed...
We can finish this.
These four policies, we discussed it in policy committee and with Mr. Cox and Dr. Fraser. These four policies need to move ahead for a couple of reasons without a second read. One is the first two, well, two of the policies, school organization and tobacco use are being revised really slightly, very slightly, and so they're sort of exempt under minor editorial revisions when you look at our policy. The other two, we need to move forward. They're overdue, and they're revisions that are required but to comply with changes in state law, and they need to be done this school year, and we're really behind the curve on them. These two policies, the suicide prevention, let me read the exact policy title, suicide, youth suicide awareness, prevention, and response is one of those two policies. The other is child slash student abuse, and these two policies are being revised with language that was drafted by PSBA to comply with changes in state law. We have added a paragraph that's a carryover from our existing suicide policy that prohibits memorials into the youth suicide awareness, prevention, and response policy. But we need to move on these two policies, and we don't have a lot of latitude in terms of the language because they're mandatory to comply with state law.
I'm going to renew my request to split out particularly one, just so we're clear, and, and if you'll give me the latitude to talk about before you make the motion, so you'll understand. The pupil, tobacco, pupils and tobacco use, I, I objected to some wording in it. That's one thing. Eight oh two, the operation of school organization, I would recommend district to the board. In my opinion, the, the policy serves little or no purpose, both from an administrative organizational position or from the administration of students, and I would suggest that this board seriously consider, as we look at policies going forward, if the policies don't add value or provide direction to the district, that we eliminate them. And so I would ask you not to include the eight oh two at this time because I would lobby that we not pass it, and if we can avoid making that pass, then I would lobby to rescind it this evening. Were required to have that one, sorry, I noticed it changed its way to make it consistent with standard language.
I, I think, I think the district is not required to have eight oh two. I, I have a couple, couple thoughts. I, traditionally, if a board member requests splitting up a motion, typically, this, this board sees fit to do that, so Mr. Grub's request in that regard isn't all that unusual. Ms. Brooks, with respect to your point, I didn't really close the loop. Traditionally, the board considers policy revisions twice unless they're minor. Mr. Tate explained why, uh, why the board might consider approving these policies on, on a first-read basis. I think his explanation is a sound one from a legal perspective, and in any event, the two-read policy is sort of a self-imposed one. And policy zero, zero, three allows the board to aggregate its own policies as it sees fit, as long as it's not violating state law, and so it could move forward on a run, one-read basis lawfully. And so the question is whether there's a majority of the nine board members to approve these, these five policies if we carve eight oh two out on a first-read basis, or six if eight oh two stays in.
Is there an objection to carving eight oh two out?
No, I just had a point of clarification.
Okay.
I thought that there was a discussion among the board that policies were going to go to policy committee, be discussed, and come to us, and we weren't going to go through that first, second-read process anyway. Now, you explained why we're doing it here, and I don't know if this is the time to get involved in maybe a more lengthy discussion. Maybe we want to do that afterwards and get clarity, but I thought they were coming as a first read when I saw them because I thought we had consensus around policy committee discussion, and then if they would come here, we wouldn't have two reads.
That was not, that was not my understanding.
So at some point, we need to clear that up. I'm okay, I don't know if you're okay for tonight. I mean, but I just want to say, I didn't question it because I thought we had changed the way we were doing it.
And, and the way to clear that up would be to revise zero, zero, three to eliminate the two-read rule and just have a one-read rule, and whether there would be two reads required for that amendment, we can punt down the list.
We can do two reads on that one.
But that would be...
Mr. Tate will put that on the list.
But it's a question...
Mr. Byler, I'm sorry.
I remember that too, Wendy, and I was thinking, because I, and I don't remember if we came to a conclusion about it, but I do remember having a discussion about that it, it's a bit laborious having the discussion in committee and then bringing it back to the board for two, two reads, and I appreciate the work Mr. Tate is doing, so that's exactly, that's all my, my only comment about that, comments about the policy.
My recollection is different because what happened previously was that the policy committee met, and then we brought something forward to a first read, and it, and, and it was not a successful conversation, and then had to come, it had to be removed, and it would have been lined up for another first read later on. And so it was my understanding that the policy committee would be responsible for getting it to a point where the first read was good, and not, not to have to hash out the, the conversation. So I, I would like to come back to this conversation about how we will approach policy, given that of all the things we do as a school board, the, the responsibility of these policies is, is one of the most significant things we do, so I, I would like to come back to how that will look.
I would think maybe we, we do it of an official committee meeting where we do, where we advertise it?
Yeah.
To come back and have that discussion. I think that'd be, be appropriate, so if you...
We also, we also, we, we, Ed and I spoke about this earlier today, informally, and the question really came to be, you know, when we came for something to say that this was the final read, to see if there were three or more board members who said, no, no, we really need a second read, and if three or more said it, this was a discussion that Ed and I had at that point to bring it back for a second, you know, first read and a second read. But if only, if only one or only two say it, and it, and it's just arbitrary that we picked three, but the reason, reason for doing it was because if, if less than three say to do it, that means the majority of the board would be probably agreeing with the, with the, the policy changes it was. That was, we were trying to find the middle ground so that if there was a, a segment of the board that said, we do want to do a second read on this topic, on this one one, that we, we could do that. We were just floating that. It's not a...
I just would like to revisit the procedure because in my recollection of many years, long before I sat here, I don't honestly have any recollection of approving board policies without having had a first read.
Yes, we did.
And so, okay, I'm just saying that i- if it happened, it is a very rare event, and the expectation of our community is, is about a certain process, so if we're going to amend our process, I think we should have a conversation about that.
So we're going to, we, we will schedule a policy committee, an advertised policy committee meeting, so that anybody that's interested in listening to that debate can attend, and we can have that debate, Mr. Byler.
And we've got to adjust our own policy. We're violating our own policy here, right? So we've got to, if our policy says... You're not violating it. You're, you're voting to... We're not following it. Correct. I'll put it that way. Correct. No suspensions, no detentions. We're just not following it. So, but that's the first policy we have to get our hands on. It's, how do we want to do it? And, and address that policy first, even if we all agree on the fact that we're going to not follow that policy, I think that's disingenuous. I think we need to fix it and write it and have it memorialized.
Agreed, and, and I'll remind you that we're going to be doing a systematic, comprehensive review of all of our policies. These are four that just require immediate attention. When we do this comprehensive work, it's going to be done, you all recall, with the PSBA, and it will be done online, and I think we ought to revisit the way we review and revise policies, given that we have new technology to do that, and the way of, of addressing policy revisions in the past and doing first read and second read could be done perhaps more expeditiously if we make use of the technology. For example, we can do revisions online as opposed to sitting around a table as a group of ten trying to wordsmith policy revisions. I think we can probably do it a lot more efficiently in, in an online fashion as we are doing with PSBA. But, but indeed, that would be a good thing to explore in a policy committee meeting.
Dr. Foster?
Yeah, I mean, the, the purpose of the first read is to really invite the public to look at what the board is doing, since policy is kind of our constitution. It, it, it shouldn't just show up unless there is a, a really compelling reason. So I think it's really critical to stick to a first-read, second-read process. That first-read process can be in the consent agenda. It, it need not be. What we ran into at that last meeting that, that, as Mrs. Brooks said, didn't go well, we weren't doing a first read. We were crafting policy at the meeting. That's not what you do at the board meeting. You're supposed to do a first read. The, the, the construction of the policy is at the policy committee. So I think first and second read need not be a time-consuming process if, as we've all pointed out, the work is done ahead of time, and that means a public policy meeting. So like, for instance, I agree completely with Mr. Grub. School organization and also Dr. Fraser had said the same thing. We don't need that policy. The policy that we had originally had the one advantage that it at least told the community what our district was. It just happened to list all the wrong schools that don't exist anymore, like junior high schools, and this was a school. And, and so this, this new version doesn't have any schools in it. That's actually a major revision. That's not a minor revision. There's, there's no schools listed. There's, so it's a completely new policy. I don't think it's anything like what we had before at, at the, the policy committee meeting, and since then, there hasn't been a public meeting, so all of this was done in emails or what have you, but we don't need it. That policy should just go away. And then the only policy, I personally believe that you can make an argument that there is any urgency on, is the suicide awareness, but that needs to be in place by state law this school year. We have time. The important thing is that the work to educate the staff and implement is, is ongoing. We don't have to, to, to do that policy tonight. It, it could be a first read. So I just think, I've never seen it in MBIT. I personally have not seen policies since I've been on the board. I've only been on for, you know, over four years. I haven't seen policies come up and get approved immediately. I just think it's bad practice. I, it's not a good way to go.
Can I add one more thing, just for efficiency sake? Do we know the, the number of policies we're going to be reviewing and amending through this PSBA review? All of them, all of them. So how many policies is that?
It's about three hundred, I believe.
Okay. So... Okay, so I really don't have a problem personally with having one look at it, going back, and changing it if we need to, but being able to approve it, just for expediency's sake. Because if we have to have two, first and second read on all these policies, folks, we're never going to go home. It's just never going to happen, and I think that we can, we can be efficient in our committee, and we have to trust in our committee, and there's nothing saying that we can't send it back to the committee for revisions. It's like we probably will do.
Right, so, so to Mark's point, I, I think we ought to bring this to a, a vote, and if they go back to, to, to be worked on some more, they do. I want to see if there's any objection to pulling eight oh two.
Not pulling, we're just going to make it as a separate.
As a separate, sorry.
Okay. Shall we make them three motions?
Yeah, just, just, just skip eight oh two in your first piece.
All right, first motion would be, I move to approve board policies two one eight point seven on tobacco use and board policy eight oh six, child slash student abuse as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second. We'll make it quick.
I move.
Let's just.
We need discussion on this.
Just do the two we've just put on. We'll do it again right.
Who's, who's second?
I did.
I have some comments.
And just for clarification, I mentioned this before. I'm not going to agree to, although it would be in the minority, the two eighteen seven at this point. I don't know, I don't necessarily agree with our perspective on the use of vaping at this point. I, the board is aware of my concerns around that, so I'll, I'll be saying no to, to this, these two together, just because they're together.
I have two comments. The first is the inclusion of, of the vaping device, the e-cigarette, and smoke as tobacco in any form. My understanding is that the vaping doesn't have to include tobacco. Of course, it can include, you know, marijuana or something like that, but that's not what we're talking about. I think that there's non-tobacco juices or some other kind of things that are done through vaping. So I want to first make sure that, that we're covering that in this policy because this seems to refer to tobacco use only, or maybe it's covered in another policy. So that's my first question, and I don't know how important this is, Rob Cox. The, it references twice in here, at least twice, Magisterial District Justice. That's not the correct term. Title for the issuing authority we'd be sending things to, it's Magisterial District Judge. That does change from time to time, so maybe you could put a clause in there that it's, or whatever the position is called at the time. And. And I, I have a fundamental problem with the first offense. In lieu of referral to the Magisterial District Justice for prosecution, the student may agree to pay a fine to the school district in the amount of fifty dollars.
That's state law.
Mark, as.
Is that state law?
I, I could actually, as Rob goes to the actual reference, I had made the same question to Rob, saying, I find it objectionable that we almost buy off.
You're buying off the chart.
Exactly, and Rob, at that time, did go into the law books and pulled the citation, and, and as he's looking to do it under pressure right now, he, he made.
I have it here.
He, he supported it with the citation.
Eighteen P A C S A section.
Yeah, it's sixty three zero six point one, Eighteenth Pennsylvania Code. A pupil who possesses or uses tobacco in a school building, et cetera, et cetera, commits a summary offense. Grading of people who commit some offense under this section shall be, shall be subject to prosecution, initiated by the local school district, and shall upon conviction be sentenced to pay a fine of not more than fifty dollars for the benefit of the school district. And so what this, what this policy essentially does is allow the student to avoid that prosecution by paying the summary fine, basically. Mr. Bylick, with respect to the, the additional language which refers to a vaping device or an e-cigarette. My understanding is that a vaping device can be used for non-tobacco related products or, or nicotine-free products. But my, my view is that s- so can the, the items that are specifically mentioned in this policy and in the statute, such as a pipe. In theory, you could smoke something other than, other than tobacco, other than a, something other than a controlled substance, something other than a substance that contains nicotine out of a pipe. The statute still allows, still allows a, a school district to prohibit possession of that item. I also view, I also, Mr. Grubb had raised concerns about adding this language to the policy with, with me before, so I've, I've had time to review the language a bit and, and think it through. I, I also don't think this is a case where a student has a fundamental, like a fundamental constitutional right to be in possession of a vaping device. And so absent that kind of a constitutional right to possess that thing, that possess that item, the school district is free to create essentially reasonable rules and regulations. It's a pretty, it has, the school district has, has a fairly wide measure of discretion in, in the area. So I think on balance, if a court were to review this language, it would allow the school district to prohibit these items.
Can I follow up? So can we do it under prohibited item or something like that instead of under tobacco use? Because I think that having it fall under tobacco use puts it in an improper category. If it's, if we want to make it a prohibited item, I'm fine with that. I mean, there's fire hazard involved with them, you know, the kids shouldn't have them anyway, in my opinion. But using your analogy of the pipe, I mean, let's face it, if, if a kid had a pipe in his mouth and he's blowing bubbles out of the pipe, are we going to fly, are we going to discipline him under this tobacco use policy?
Actually, Mark, there's, there's, find the point you brought up.
Just please let me finish, Charlie. The other, the other issue I have is, are we, because we're, we're not following our own policy on two reads, and this is a disciplinary policy, does that put us in an issue? Because, because if we don't have first and second read, and then we adopt this tonight, could a parent or a parent's attorney come back and say, well, that sounded valid policy because you actually didn't follow your own policy?
I don't think so. They, they, I, I don't believe that they could, they could establish like a due process violation because the district decided, voted to approve the policy on a more expedited basis. And then just to address, Mr. Bylick, your first point, which is where this additional language should be in the policy. I, I could be talked into having a separate paragraph that refers to devices. The reason I inserted the words here is because section sixty three oh six of the code puts pipe in this paragraph. It says, it defines tobacco as a lighted or unlighted cigarette, cigar, pipe, or other lighted smoking product. And so even the statute doesn't really make great grammatical sense. It's referring to a pipe as tobacco. Since the policy basically steals that language and plugs it into the policy, I felt putting the word vaping device and e-cigarette there made sense. So that's where I was coming from, but like I said, I, I don't have, I don't have, you know, a firm view one way or another.
I think it's okay if, if the, if the e-cigarette or the vaping device is being used for tobacco, but maybe there's, like I said, do we have another policy that's prohibited items? I'm sure there's other prohibited items in the district that are within a policy. Now, I, I don't want to go and create a new policy, but maybe we should in this case.
The controlled substance prob, policy, the, the controlled substances policy speaks to paraphernalia, so that would, perhaps would be another logical place.
Well, that again goes to, it's really not paraphernalia controlled substance if it's just these juice cartridges. So I think, look, I don't want to overanalyze it, and maybe I am, but I, I know if it was my child, right, and my child had a device and had a cartridge that was neither tobacco nor a controlled substance, I would probably have a problem with them making this one for this since it's not covered.
What's the policy number for that paraphernalia? Do you know?
Yeah, it's two eighteen point three, drugs and controlled substances.
The, the point that Mark has brought up, Rob, I think puts us, and, and Ed, I apologize, but the, the first offense, particularly section A under the first offense, that referral to a magistrate district judge, justice judge, whatever they're called this week, doesn't apply because you don't refer a vaping device or e-cigarette because they are not restricted by age, by state law. So you would not make the referral of those items to the district person to collect the fifty bucks. So there would need to be carve-out language added to this that says, when appropriate. I know it sounds minor to add it, but you can't collect, you should not be collecting fifty bucks, which I think, you know, I had caught on initially, and Mark then later caught on. The question about collecting fifty bucks, if we're not authorized, I don't know. I, I run into a little bit of a, of trouble.
Well.
I was voting no, so you can go through and see where it goes, but I was going no.
No, it should be clarified. What are you going, no, yes, it should be clarified.
Mr. Grubb, what I would say about that is you, you, you can only refer. You, you can only refer a matter that's, that's covered by the statute to the Magisterial District Justice. So Councilor Rock's policy is going to be broader than the statute.
I fear that in the future, we'd be collecting fifty bucks where we don't honor by law.
I understand that point. So it's, the, the fix would be where appropriate or, or some, some additional language to that, to that paragraph.
Where provided by, for by law.
Any last comment, Dr. Foster?
Yeah, so I, just, just two things. So in the, in the child abuse, there's this deletion of the PSBA templated language. It, it removes the district's requirement to train volunteers in child abuse recognition and reporting. I, I don't know if PSBA overreached or whether somewhere in this school code twelve oh five point six or twenty three P A C S A sixty three eleven or somewhere, they actually had a rationale for that.
My, my interpretation, Dr. Foster, was that they, was that the statute does not require that sort of training. And that it was included in the policy as mandatory for, for basically, in the interest of best practices. That, that requirement does not appear in the statute.
Right.
I also, I just want to say, could it be to, Dr. Foster, that we now have, they have to do all those background checks? So where they weren't as required before?
There's no question that volunteers now have to go through the background checks.
Right, so I'm just saying, maybe they took it out because they're saying volunteers have to do that, yeah.
We, we took it out, but PSBA, and I, I, I understand, I, I think Mr. Cox's thinking. It really does look like a best practice if you were trying to create this perfect organization, this, you know, you have volunteers, you're giving their clearances. There's an opportunity to, kind of like in academic standards, an opportunity for experts to spread the, the word to, to, to lay people, like, hey, how do you recognize child abuse? It would be a good thing, and, and so, but we don't have to do it. And, and there may be some costs involved, I, I would suppose, and risks, right?
Yeah, I think it would, for us organizationally, it would grind us to a halt on the front end. Just because you have, you have trips at the beginning of the year, you have different events, different, different activities that take place, and if these folks need to go through this specialized training, first of all, we need to have people in place to provide this training, so it becomes a staffing issue and a time issue for us. But then we need to make sure that that happens at a certain point in sequence before that event or that trip, or whatever the experience is. And then on the back end, certainly, there's an exposure element to this as well. So front end reasons as well as back end reasons.
And I'm not saying we should do this, but, but just out of, of, of kind of, some kind of respect to what PSBA was after, we could consider online training, right? That's what, what Way Scouts of America does, for instance. So, you know, it doesn't have to be our people. I, it's, it's just a thought. And then the only other thought that I had, of course, I will vote no for these because they didn't follow a first or second read. But, but the discussion that we had kind of points out the importance of a first read, right? I mean, you had people on the board trying to think of scenarios where, like, like both my colleagues did, where the, the tobacco policy might go astray. And, and so when you put a policy out for the first time, that, that, that community has a chance to know that it's there. Actually, their critiques of it will come at the, at probably by the second read, right? Or if it gets kicked back to the policy committee, but it gives them, you know, a heads up, hey, we're, we're talking about this thing. And then I think we have a lot of policies to go through, no doubt about it. But, you know, for instance, at MBIT, things will go up in a kind of consent agenda kind of way. If, if there are issues with them, that, that first read is the time where this rule of three people is invoked. You know, if there's a, a few people that have concerns, back it goes into the policy committee. If you don't have the first read, you, you can't send it back. It's either approved or it's not approved. You're done. And so, but I think it can be done expeditiously. I, I just think it's an important feature, so that's why I'm in that.
I think one, Mr. Dr. Lamry is updating. The training, the child abuse training awareness is done online. It is an online program currently. And the second thing is, is it's de facto round one, round two read. If it comes up for round one, if it comes up to be adopted and is refused as might be potentially tonight, it does go back to policy because the question then becomes, you know, and we, we have it exemplified tonight, which is eight oh two, there's a discussion about eliminating it. And the other one, there's a discussion about there needs to be a little more finish, and that winds up being, coming back for a second read. So in essence, we're in that now by the process of trying to put it forward as a one pass.
Right.
We, we wind up coming back.
So let's, let's, let's see where this goes. We've all had plenty of discussion two and three times. So I'm going to go ahead and then call for a roll call vote, please.
Let's just review what the motion is at this point.
The motion.
Two eighteen seven and eight oh six.
Okay, thank you.
Two eighteen and one?
Eight oh six.
Eight oh six.
Tobacco use and child student abuse.
Mrs. Brooks?
No.
Dr. Foster?
No.
Mr. Grubb?
No, the reason stated up two eighteen seven.
Mrs. McKessy?
I don't think we're fully there yet. I don't think we're in full agreement, so I have to say no.
No. Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
No.
Motion fails for five.
Just make the motion, eight oh six alone, just make the motion for eight oh six alone. Was most of the, let me ask administratively, was, was most of the noes were related to the vaping policy or were they related to the child abuse policy? Mine was specifically around vaping.
Well, I can comment on my own vote. I don't like not following our own policy, so first of all, I, I would have not voted for it, for that. My concern if this passed was, or it, yes, was, if Mr. Cox said, yes, I can make a change to that, yes, I can make a change to that, but if it passed, no, he can't, unless it comes back. So I, I thought that, that's a major problem with, with this process right here is that if we get five votes, well, now we're stuck with a motion we probably should have amended. And I even think our solicitor said, yeah, maybe I, we can go back and do that another way. So if we have that situation where we have a policy that we probably should have amended, or a solicitor's at a, at a public meeting recorded saying, policy probably, I can go back and amend it, and then we discipline somebody on this policy that probably should have been amended, we have a problem.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I heard it the same way.
Okay.
I heard we could if we wanted to. We were okay if we didn't, and.
I think we're just underscoring that we are not clear on our process, and that was the basis of my no vote. And I, I think this just demonstrates more than anything that we need a policy committee meeting to understand how we want to approach these policies. And, you know, for me personally, I think that we do need a first read process to allow full commentary and allow the public to have an understanding.
So why don't, we, we've already said we're going to schedule a meeting to have that debate.
Right, so I mean, for me, I would vote no for the next one, so.
Ms. Thomas, do you have a comment otherwise?
We've been told that we're in violation of state law, and we're not going to pass a policy to fix that tonight, seriously?
That's not these two. We haven't gotten.
This child student abuse one is absolutely one that's not compliant with state law. Or that's what I was understood.
There's a movement to fix eight oh six, to oppose eight oh six individually. I will vote for eight oh six. That, if it goes the way it went, that'll be fine.
Would you like to make a new motion for eight oh six?
We actually, of all the policies we're considering tonight, eight oh six is probably the most important, I believe.
I think suicide's the one that's on the clock. That child abuse is not-
Let's just do one of the-
Well, it doesn't really matter, actually.
Put them on what I'm trying to do.
I'm sorry.
Let me just say, both, both the suicide awareness policy and the child abuse policy have urgency, in my view. The, the suicide awareness policy is required to be implemented. The statute says, uh, at the be, it says, it's, it's sort of, it's sort of, the statute's vaguely worded. You could interpret it to mean at the beginning of the fifteen sixteen school year, or during the fifteen sixteen school year. And the policy that, uh, that is on the agenda with respect to child abuse tracks, uh, substantial recent changes to the law. So, so both of them, in my view, have, uh, have some, some urgency to them.
So, Mr. Tate, would you like to make a motion for eight oh six?
I move to approve Board Policy eight oh six, child slash student abuse, as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second. Have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. P, Byler?
No, for the reason that we're not following our policy.
Mrs. Brooks?
No.
Dr. Foster?
No.
Mr. Grubbs?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Motion passes six three. Mr. Tate, would you like to take the other three?
One more motion, yes, thank you.
Do you want to separate it to take the urgent one?
Um-
Or do you want to put all three together and go?
We're simply re, renumbering eight nineteen, so I think we can do those three together.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. I move to approve Board Policy eight nineteen, operations, youth suicide awareness prevention and response, as contained in the attachment to this agenda. And I move to renumber Board Policy eight nineteen, records management, to Policy eight hundred, records management. And I move to eliminate Board Policy eight twenty-one, operations suicide.
Second. Mr. Grubbs, any comments or questions?
I need clarification, I'm sorry. So the eight nineteen is, um, a new policy, correct? The first-
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Eight, I'm sorry, I'm going back here.
And you can confirm this, eight, I'm sorry, eight nineteen is, is a PSBA form, other than the addition of what's in yellow about our memorials.
That is also correct. So, Mark, do you want me just to-
The second two, I just want, can I say it so I-
Absolutely.
Make sure I understand it?
Absolutely.
So then the second two bullets are, we're basically eliminating those policies, is that correct?
One, one we're eliminating, and the other one we are renumbering, to be in alignment with PSBA's numbering. So-
Number two, eight hundred, I understand. So there's no change in the policy, there's change in renumbering, and then the third bullet, eight twenty-one, we're removing altogether.
Exactly, because we wouldn't want to have redundant, or duplicate, rather, uh, suicide policies. Exactly. Any other questions?
And just confirm for me, so eight nineteen is, was to be, uh, put in place e, either by the start of this year, but certainly by the end of the school year, is what you were saying, right?
Correct. Please, first.
Just, let me, this gets very confusing. So let me try and just make sure I understand. They're really not in the order that they're being executed. What really is happening is, the first step is, we have an eight nineteen, operations, records management, which we're going to immediately renumber to eight hundred, leaving an open, open space. We're then going to introduce a new eight nineteen, which is the suicide associated policy, and at that, immediately following that, we're going to retire the eight twenty-one, uh, policy. So it's just that precedent, as presented, the, the precedent didn't make sense when it was read.
Ms. Brooks, the, the statute says, beginning with the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year, each school entity shall, and the first paragraph says, adopt an age-appropriate youth suicide awareness and prevention policy consistent with subsection C. So you can interpret that to mean at the beginning of the school year, or during the school year, but either way, um, it has to be done sooner rather than later, in my, in my view.
And so the, the language of eight nineteen, with the exception of the added part that we took from the original policy and added in, uh, the, the language of this policy is just following what the state is requiring us to, to have?
Yes, that, that is correct. That, that policy, um, meets the requirements of the statute.
So for example, if, um, we wanted to change something that said, uh, as part of the district's professional development plan, educators in buildings serving, serving students in grade six through twelve shall participate in four hours of youth suicide awareness and prevention training every five years. For example, if we wanted to change it to six hours or three hours, we couldn't do that because the law is telling us that we have to frame it this way?
You could do the former. You could increase it to six hours. You couldn't, you couldn't reduce it. So it, it sets the baseline.
That's right.
Sorry, one more question. Reading eight nineteen, there's no, this is operations for our staff. Um, there's no potential discipline to a student, correct?
Cor, cor, correct. This isn't, correct. This is not a disciplinary policy.
Dr. Foster?
I, you know, and it's, 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 uh, just repeating. So, a, at the policy meeting on, I think, on January sixteenth, we, we brought up the suicide policy. There were concerns from the board that it was not a requirement, um, that PSBA had overreached. We asked our solicitor around February eighth, we got a pretty clear answer, that during this school year, we, we need to, to have this policy. So, you know, here we are at the, uh, end of March, just doing, skipping the first read, second read. We've known about this for a while, right? Since the beginning of February. So it's just a strange thing, and it really highlights our inability as a group to effectively prosecute policy, whereby, for, you know, a vast stretch of time, we didn't do anything, and suddenly now we have to do it right away. Can't do a first read, can't do a second read, there's no time for that, got to go. So that, you know, when that kind of world happens, when there's big delays, and then, and then, and then you have to run, you know that things aren't working well. So, hope we can do better in the future. I'll definitely be a no.
Thanks, Dr. Foster. Have a roll call vote, please.
Um, Mrs. Brooks?
Um, no.
No. Dr. Foster?
No.
Mr. Grubbs?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Yes.
Motion passes seven two. Uh, Ms. Brooks, could you please read number twelve?
I move to-
What were you doing with eight oh two?
Oh, right.
Oh, you want to talk, okay, you want to talk about it? Is, is-
Oh, I, I would, I would make the motion and defend the motion, if that's all right, which is, I, I, I simply am going to, uh, move to eliminate Policy eight oh two, the operational school organization. Uh, op, operation, whoa, sorry, move to, I'm going to move to eliminate Policy eight oh two, operations, school organization.
Second.
Any comment?
I, I've already expressed my opinion, I, I-
No, we've got a motion and a second.
Right.
I'm advised we don't need to take public comment. Have a roll call vote, please. Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
No.
Mr. Grubbs?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Motion passes eight one, two pages gone from the policy manual. Okay.
Woo-hoo!
Thank you all.
And will two eighteen come back to us, Dr.?
We, we will have a publicly advertised policy committee. I would recommend that the first topic is, is how we bring policies to-
Yes.
-to the board, and the second can be any urgent policies that we have. I would commend Mr. Tate, though, on doing some great work that was out there, um, consistently with what Mrs. Thomas said.
After tonight, he might quit.
I, I think we, I think, I think we agreed to streamline, um, you know, there, there seems to only be big discussion of policy meeting and board meetings, which is interesting to me. So anyway, we're going to go to, uh, number twelve, please, Ms. Brooks.
I move to approve the personnel actions as contained in the attachments to this agenda. Second.
Thank you, Mrs. McKessy. Any questions for Mr. Yowey? Have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Grubbs?
I'm going to abstain.
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Thorwart?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Motion passes eight with one abstention. So we're going to move to the solicitor's co, uh, report. Ms. Cox, please.
Mr. Block, there was an executive session, as you know, last night on a matter of potential litigation. Um, and, Mr. Grubbs, I wanted to, um, mention that you were, in fact, correct about the prevailing wage threshold. I couldn't remember offhand whether it had an escalator built into it, but it is, it remains at twenty-five thousand dollars. The phrase usually with respect to public bidding, uh, that's referred to in the cases, um, is, bids are awarded to the lowest responsible bidder meeting specifications.
Thank you.
Uh, you caught the spirit of it. Um, that's all I had from Mr. Block.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move to old bit, old business, please. Uh, is there any new business? Mrs. Thomas?
I have something. So I would like to start a committee and be responsible for it, um, to name the middle schools. And I would like to engage, um, I feel like the administration has a lot going on right now, so I'd like to have their suggestions on some people, and anybody on the board who wants to sit on it, and explore maybe some financial things, and some community members, if somebody, but I would, I mean, I know we have a lot to do, and everybody has a lot, um, on their plates, but I feel like we're, that they're going to be built in two years now, and, you know, we've talked about this at facilities a couple times, but it's like somebody has control of it, and tried to do some work on it, and people on the board seem like they thought it was a good idea, so I'm throwing it out there that I'll organize it, so to speak, um, and make sure a committee meeting happens, and if we can start an email address where people can sign up, if they want to, from the public, if they want to do it, I'd love to have kids on it, or whatever. Maybe I'll say that I'll suggest this, I'll put some stuff around it, and bring it back to the next meeting, some framework around it after sitting with Dr. Frazier. But I feel like they're going to be built, and then we're just going to have to name them, and we won't have time to do anything else, so.
I just want, about a year ago, I said that I wanted us to review our naming policy. And so I just want to reiterate that before a committee meets, I want to make sure that the naming policy that we have in place represents what we want it to say is clear, and so that the work of the committee, uh, is productive. So I, I think it's a great idea to have a committee. I would say that the timing of that maybe should be delayed until the fall, so that we have an opportunity through the spring to make that specific policy a priority.
That's fine. I don't even, you know, if you can do that, Dr. Tate, that's great. If not, you know, we'll, we'll assist, I'll assist, or whatever. But I, I know there's some interest in people of doing this, so, but we need to get it going. Or we're going to, particularly, if we're going to get any financial information out of it, it's going to have to go fast.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with you actually starting and working within the existing policy, and where that policy needs to be reconsidered and changed. You either adjust what you do, or we make recommendations of policy.
Well, I'll work with Dr. Tate, we'll come back, we'll put some framework around it, around timing of the policy, and we'll all talk to Dr. Frazier, and anybody else who has any ideas, email me. Um, but I just-
I, I had asked for that policy to be reviewed, because for me, in my reading of it, I thought that, that the language was vague. And so if, if you're going to-
Yeah, I don't want to do the work, and then somebody say it doesn't mean policy. Absolutely, right.
Exactly. So I just think that, that the, the priority before any work is done should be to just make sure that we have a policy that is a guideline for how this committee will operate.
We'll get it out there, we'll work together. Anybody else who wants to jump in, let me know. But somebody, you know, if we don't start doing this, and the administration has so much going on right now, I feel like, um, you know, somebody's just got to put it together and start the ball rolling. And I think that we could potentially have a lot of people in the community who would have good ideas, or know how to do some of this, or help us raise, you know, go out to people who might, and there are rules probably around what we want to name, and all that kind of stuff, that I don't know. I just thought I'd bring it up, so.
And, and the time will come, before we know it, uh, Mr. Taylor, when would you estimate in terms of signage and things like that from a construction standpoint?
Right. Let me, let me get the guys on board, and we'll start to see when certain pieces of the project are going to be scheduled for completion. You know, things like, um, gym floor, uh, logos, restriping, you know, all those kind of things could be affected by, um, school names. So we are going to have a timeline to work against, unfortunately, and I'll know that better once I get some sense of schedule from the contractors, and I can get back to you.
Well, and if we get those items, and we may decide we're not going to have it done before the gym floor's going to go in plane, if we, you know, like, let's, we'll have to talk through those things.
The hawk is added after the fact.
All right, so we'll, we'll look out for that, and, uh, old business coming up through future meetings. I think it's a great idea. Any other new business, Mr. Grubbs?
At the, at a previous finance committee, I, I want to know what the board's preference is, the previous finance committee, there was discussion about the free and reduced lunch program. Uh, and I appreciate the perseverance of, or indulgence of the board to not discuss it at the March seventeenth meeting, uh, where I was not present. I know a number of board members were concerned that they were, uh, that, that the thought to not offer free and reduced lunch at the high school level, it's only the high school level we're talking about, uh, would be associated with them. And I will freely admit that, uh, I took exception to the way the free and reduced lunch program was currently being planned as part of our, uh, renewing of our contract with Chartwells. So is, is it the board's intention to discuss that at a specific topic at a future date, or shall we discuss it now? What was the, what was the intention of the board coming from last committee?
Can I, can I jump in on that a little bit?
Yeah, Mr. Wright, please.
Uh, I have, uh, members from Chartwells to be at our next, uh, finance committee meeting to discuss the operations of how we're doing it right now, so that would give everybody more information about it.
That, that's fine, and I'll, I'll defer to them. I just want to be very clear about one thing, because the discussion, as brief as it was, spoke about eliminating the free and reduced lunch. Very high level, without expressing one way or the other, the discussion did not focus, or did not interfere with the provision of free and reduced lunch at the elementary or middle school level for students who qualify under the federal program. That was not part of the discussion. The discussion focused only on how the free and and reduced lunch is administered at the high school, and at present, correct me if I'm wrong, Robert, at present, the high school does not participate in the free and reduced lunch program, and the funding of the children who would otherwise have been eligible under the federal program is funded from the profit, from the-
It's from the receipts within the fund.
From the receipts of, of Chartwells produced from other students. So that, that was the nature of the question. It was not a blanket removal, we are not doing that. We don't currently offer, uh, or take the federal government funding for free and reduced lunch at the high school level because of some difference of opinion on how that forces children to take a certain framework of lunch. So I just, I don't want to go into, like, who's right, who's wrong, and what our opinions are, but I just wanted to clarify, it is not eliminating free and reduced lunch, a federal program, from the elementary or middle school levels. That was not part of the discussion, that continues, for sure.
Dr. Foster?
Yeah, so, uh, we've talked about policy tonight, and it, it's, this timeline for the, uh, naming of the schools is, is pretty tight. And so, again, we realize that as a school board, our time, and managing our time is, is, is important. Uh, and, and we'd had a number of discussions at different venues, I think, subcommittee meetings, and over the years, about whether we should change the way we do school board meetings. I know, uh, Mr. Abrams would talk about work sessions. Um, but an idea that had been bouncing around for a while, including from Dr. Frazier, was, why don't we just go to one school board meeting a month, and, uh, full meeting, and then use that other Thursday for things like policy. Um, and I know from, uh, my work at MBIT, that, uh, Centennial has just gone to that system. And so the, the agreement that they have is, if there's something, like for instance, tonight, we had a personnel action, and there was only one item on it. Um, so if there's something urgent that needs to be done, it's understood that it can be done on that off Thursday, which is normally not a full board meeting, but if you have to do it, you have to do it, like passing a policy in a hurry. Um, so, you know, I, I don't know when we could move to that kind of system, or if there's enough support to move to one full board meeting a month. but I think it's a great idea. Other districts are doing it, Dr. Frazier suggested it, and therefore it has to be good. So, anyway, I'd like to see us begin to move that way, since we have work to be done.
This board did, at one time-
Mr. Grub, I'm sorry, is there any other, can anybody give one before, and then I'll come back to you? No, I'm sorry, Jerry.
This board did at one time have, it's always had two meetings a month. At one time it did have what was an agenda meeting, and then a second meeting, which did not vote on the same nature of issues, what happened was, over time, the number of issues came up to be so great that they just kind of merged. So that meeting, as you noticed, we have the consent agenda, there was that meeting where typically that was the voting meeting, and the other meeting often was a discussion. Historically, that goes back sixteen, seventeen years.
Mr. Bylock, you have a question or a comment? You don't? Okay, so we're gonna go to the committee reports, Ms. Brooks' academic standards, we had earlier this evening?
Yes, we did, and it was, I will say, an exceptional meeting. We covered two topics, some special education programming topics, and the Links program. And it was a very chock-full, dense meeting of a lot of information. I encourage people to watch that on the YouTube channel. And I want to particularly thank the staff members who came out and gave such a thorough presentation, so thanks, everybody. Our next meeting is going to be on Monday, Thursday, May 5th, at six o'clock. That will be our annual review of textbooks, that will be up for approval, and I guess the vote on that would be later in the month of May, so it will be important if you have interest in hearing what the textbook situation will be. The other topic that we're going to talk about is another look at some world language issues. I just want to point out that we set the academic standards agendas pretty far in advance, the calendar for which is posted online, but we're gonna have some rejiggering that we're gonna need to do on the June topic, which I'll report on next month. But for anybody who's looking, if you look to that, just subject to change.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Mr. Grub, anything left to talk about facilities-wise?
I was traveling for business, and I hope most of you met last night, to talk about facilities. I will watch it with bated breath, again, as I did on the train tonight.
And our next facilities meeting?
April 20th.
Fantastic. Mrs. Thomas?
We haven't had a meeting since I reported last, but our next meeting is April 14th.
All right, Mr. Tate, I think we know what's going on with policy. So I will go to Dr. Foster and Mrs. Thomas around MBIT.
No new items since we last discussed, next meeting, April 11th.
Ms. McKessy?
Nothing new since we last discussed, and the next meeting is Tuesday, April 14th.
Fantastic, thank you. Mr. Bylock, anything from the Council Rock Education Foundation?
I'm gonna read this email that I received from Allison McCall. The Council Rock Education Foundation Raising Great Kids Speaker Series fourth program is coming up on Tuesday, April 5th, at 7:00 PM at Newtown Middle School. This program is called Instagram and Snapchat for Parents. This is a hands-on opportunity to learn how kids use these apps, and get your questions answered about safety, controls, and risks. The program will also feature an expert from NOVA, which is the Network of Victim Assistance, on social media education, and our own community of high school students helping parents. All are welcome to attend, anyone interested in attending can RSVP at CRF, I'm sorry, creducationfoundation.org, click on events, and Raising Great Kids Speaker Series. RSVP is requested but not required. Also, look for information coming soon about our final program for the school year, A Natural High, featuring Matt Belachi? Belacer Belachi, sorry. On May 4th, location to be determined, this is a positive, science-based, and seriously entertaining approach to substance abuse prevention. The program is sponsored by the Council Rock Education, the Council Rock Educational Support Professionals Association. The speaker series is sponsored by the Children's Hospital in Philadelphia.
Thank you, Ms. Bylock. We'll move to our second round of public comment, please.
Did you miss me?
I always miss you. Know where you were first round.
Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough. First, thank you for putting the cost of projects on the agenda tonight. Second, as a member of the only capital planning team that recommended the renovation in June 2014 of Holland Middle, at the same time the district was addressing the needs of Newtown Middle, I am happy that at least eight board members agreed. In 2014, two years ago, the three middle schools needed close to $75 million worth of identifiable capital projects without soft costs and code updates to keep students warm, safe, and dry. If you had not done this, you would have spent more money in the long run on three schools piecemeal. I am not totally happy with every part of the designs, which you know, but I absolutely believe that both schools had to be done. So, I will take the good design, the bad, the beautiful, the ugly, and the over-the-top square footage such as a 10-feet-long corridor at Newtown Middle, for the greater good of getting the students in a 21st-century capital learning environment that Council Rock desperately needs for its 7th and 8th graders. Addressing both schools at the same time was a good and physically sound plan, so thank you for doing that. Last meeting, when you talked about equalizing both high schools, there was a lot of misinformation given out to the public by members of the public. So, I prepared this spreadsheet that I passed around for you. And I want the board to know, and the public to know, that North has a larger enrollment declines than South by any measure that you make. The year before South opened, North had 1,124 more students than they presently have. South peaked in 2007, and has only lost 52 students since its peak. North has more classrooms than South. North has 103 classrooms, and South has 87. I put for you a chart, how many large, medium, and small classrooms each school has. But the overall thing is that North has 16 more teaching stations than South, so we have less amount of students in the bigger school. South is a capacity of 2,000, and North 2,400, and North currently has 1,733 students. Since 2002, when South opened, North has lost 412 students, and South has gained 170. Since South opened, the peak total high school enrollment, not counting Sloan, was 4,438 students, and now it's 3,834 students. Since 2007, the high schools are currently down 602 students, with 52 down at North. Each school's peak enrollment, North before South was built, and South in 2007, North had 704 students more than South has ever had. Thank you.
Nancy. Any other public comment, Mr. McGill?
Steve McGill, Holland, PA. I don't have very many numbers, so hopefully I can get to some other points. First thing I want to say is, I want to congratulate the board on approving these two projects. I do agree that both projects are needed. Newtown Middle, I think the school, you know, served us well. I hope that the new one does the same, and I think I have full confidence in Doug Taylor and his team, that they've done a great job, and thank you to him. For the board, I think the watch word going forward has to be flexibility. And right along with it has to be sensitivity. Flexibility in terms of which grades go to which levels. Right now we're K through 6, 7, 8, and 9 through 12. There's no reason why that has to continue. The second thing is flexibility in the sending areas. We've talked about grandfathering islands, you know, we've got all these neat terms that were thrown around there. I leave it to the administration to noodle through that. Balance doesn't necessarily mean 50/50. Some things are in balance when they're 45/55, or when they're 40/60, either way. So, let's make sure we understand what we're talking about when we say balance. I lived in Newtown Crossing in another life, and it didn't matter to me which side of the creek I was on, okay? And before Council Rock South High School was opened, there was no North and South in this district. It was Council Rock, there was one Council Rock, and I think we need to keep that in mind. When it comes to things like a 5th grade that's gonna be facing maybe a little more change than other kids, we need to have sensitivity, we need to have Council Rock events that pull the groups together. I don't know, I can't remember which school it is, Shamone or Pensbury, but they have a big, a full-day event of competition between two teams. And I don't see any reason why Council Rock can't do the same thing, mix it up. There's all kinds of ways to do icebreakers, there's all kinds of ways, given technology, for kids to continue relationships despite, you know, changing schools and going to different groups. And we have to remember to focus on the fact that they're not losing old friends, they're making new friends, and more friends, and that's a good thing. Those kind of cohesion events will do more for pushing Council Rock ahead than anything else. Lastly, we have a conundrum about naming the schools. I didn't like Council Rock North and Council Rock South, because it immediately reminds me of divisions in the past that weren't good. So, my solution to the middle schools is that one of them be called Council Rock Middle School Number One, and Council Rock Middle School A, so that we've got two top-notch middle schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Is there any final public comment? Okay, is there any board comment?
We had a lot of discussion about policy tonight, and, you know, there were some things that I didn't vote on, but I really appreciate the effort, Mr. Tate. It's a big job, and please don't run away from it. It definitely has to be done, but I just wanted to say again, thank you very much for stepping up and taking care of it.
Anything else? Meeting adjourned.